Hey, good evening. This is Peter Casper. I'd like to call the Town of Hebron's Board of Selectmen. We're in the meeting to order at seven o'clock. And with that, if those who are able to stand and join us in the
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Okay, before we get started, I just like to note that Andy Tierney, our town manager, is not feeling well and is not able to join us this evening. And Donna Williams will be representing the town manager's office during our meetings. Donna, any additions or changes to the agenda?
I have none.
Okay, any on the board, any additions or changes? All right, that moves us to section four on our agenda, which is public comment. This section of the agenda is reserved for persons in attendance who wish to briefly address the Board of Selectmen. The Board requests that a person's comments be limited to a single period lasting three minutes or less. While the Board respects the right of the public to provide comment, this time is not intended for open discussion or a board response. Residents who wish to request a dialogue, simply make arrangements to do so through the town manager's office, but you're welcome to contact me or frankly, any member of the Board as well. If you are joining us remotely, I thank you. And if you wish to comment, please type comment. And Donna will recognize in the chat box and Donna will recognize you at the appropriate time. So Donna, and one?
Here is something I know.
You're the only one here in attendance, so.
Matt's under good to know.
Oh, good to know. Okay, so you're not making any public comments. You can. All right, so that does move us to good to know. So Donna?
So I would like to invite Matt Hart to come up to the table. He is our executive director from Crowe, Capital Region Council of Government, and he has a presentation to present to the Selectmen about the good work that Crowe does
for the town. Thank you. Welcome, Matt.
Yes, thank you so much for having me. And I'll try to keep it to a concise presentation because I know you've got a lot of agenda items. But if we can load up the PowerPoint, please, here, Donna. This really is just an opportunity for me to come out and chat with you a little bit about our work. You know, you may or may not be as familiar with us and then gives me a chance to learn a little bit more about you and the town and take your feedback as well. So I've been in this role almost three years. I'm a former town manager. And I've been working my way around the region, trying to present to all the legislative bodies in our 38 communities. Next slide, please. Just cover that in advance. All right. So regional councils of governments in Connecticut, we've got nine in Connecticut. We happen to be the largest serving 38 municipalities. Residential population of a little under a million people, geographic region of a little over a thousand square miles. So good sized by Connecticut standards. So what do we do? And you will find councils of governments across the country. There's some variation. But really, they they provide a framework for municipalities and in other states, counties to come together and address critical issues of concern, offer a set of services, et cetera. So as I'll talk about our role tonight, you'll see, we don't provide as many direct services to the public. We provide services to our members, to our municipalities. So we help you do your job. The next slide, please. Great. So we can also function as what's called the Metropolitan Planning Organization, the MPO. And in Connecticut, seven of the nine councils of governments also host the MPO. So the Metropolitan Planning Organization, that's a federal designation in which we administer federal transportation planning monies, which I'll talk a little bit about. And then the third hat that we wear, we serve, and this is a recent designation we received, we are now the Economic Development District for the region. And in that role, we're able to apply for federal Economic Development Administration monies to support economic development initiatives in our region. So council governments, MPO, Economic Development District. So a little bit about our mission, I'm not going to read it word for word. But it talks about how we work to lead to enhance quality of life, vibrancy, the vitality of our Greater Hartford region. We provide our members a set of programs and services. We're the region's designated MPO, as I already talked about, and we're a strong advocate for our region and regional solutions. Next slide, please. So talking a little bit about our committee structure, here are our standing committees. Our policy board, that's our primary governing body. So that's analogous to you in your role with the town. And our policy board is comprised of 41 members. Each of the 38 towns, the chief elected official is automatically a member of the board. He or she has the ability to designate an alternate. And most communities where you have a town manager or a town administrator, they designate that person to serve as the alternate. Because, you know, many of the chief elected officials have a full-time job and attend daytime meetings, et cetera. So Mr. Tierney has represented you in that capacity very ably for several years now. But Mr. Casper, you're also a member of the Board and you're always welcome, you know, if you can ever find time. And I know you've got a full-time employment as well. So a policy board makes our big decisions. The city of Hartford also has three additional seats. So that's how we get to the number of 41. Transportation Committee, this is a very important role. Mr. Bordeaux serves as your representative there. The Transportation Committee vets all of those MPO actions related to transportation planning. And I'll talk a little bit more about that. A Regional Planning Commission, they hear certain land use applications. And they're primarily for applications within proximity to a municipal boundary. And you've got two representatives here, Mr. Zikis and Mr. Sousa. Our Municipal Services Committee, this is the committee that kind of that reviews new programs and services for the CAG that we may want to provide. It's also a good opportunity for towns to come together to talk about issues that they're facing, to try to come up with solutions. We often talk about shared services in that form, towns looking to share services with one another. So Mr. Tierney also serves as your representative there. And then Donna was telling me, this is a little bit out of date, but our Capital Region Emergency Planning Council, these, this is a group comprised of emergency management and public safety folks from across the region. So we will update that for your membership. Next slide, please. We have four departments. I'll touch on each one briefly. We've got approximately, I think we've got 34 positions, regular positions at present, and our operating budget is roughly $10 million a year. Most of our funding is from the federal government. About 55 to 60% of our funding, then we get a sizable grant from the state. And then we assess all of our member towns dues. The dues comprise about 8% of our revenues. Next slide, please. So leading off with transportation planning, this is our largest single department, and it's where most of the funding is. So this group of folks, they support the Transportation Committee and help administer these federal and state transportation dollars. There are a couple of grant programs that are very, very popular. The most popular probably is the local Transportation Capital Improvement Program or LOTSIP. You see the link there. I'll also make sure that you receive this electronically. That General Transportation Funding Sources, that's a great reference document where you can see all sorts of federal and state funding programs for transportation-related initiatives. We conduct planning studies. For example, we will look at a corridor or a stretch of road, and typically we select these through a competitive process. And we'll critically assess them. Typically, for a safety perspective, could also be from a public transit perspective, a complete streets perspective, depending on the character of the road. And we'll come up with a set of recommendations for the town. The reason these studies are important is oftentimes they're needed in order to apply for funding for actual construction. So typically, the planning study comes first, then followed by designing construction. A good example of one we're engaged in right now is we're just about to start a study of the Berlin Turnpike, the whole 11-mile corridor. And we're doing this in partnership with the DOT and the towns of Weatherfield, Newington, and Berlin, which are also in our region. And we're going to be looking primarily at safety. It's one of the most problematic roadways in our region from a safety perspective. So that's an example of a corridor study. We've got a good relationship with the DOT and the transit agencies. We often serve as an intermediary if our towns have an issue. So that's a role we serve. And then you see some of the initiatives on the right-hand side of the page. I already talked about the Berlin Turnpike study. You may have heard of the Greater Hartford Mobility Study. That's a very, very significant project that's still in the planning phase. The DOT has completed the first planning phase for that project. That one, if it moves forward, is going to require a lot of federal monies. And it will require some realignment of 91 and 84 in an effort to better connect the city to the riverfront and to make those highways more safe. They're very problematic from a safety perspective, too, if you've gone through the tunnel on your way headed westbound. So those are just a couple of examples of initiatives in the area of transportation planning. Moving on. So the LOTSIP, this is probably our single most popular grant program, and this is funded by the state DOT using federal transportation dollars. So this is a, it's proven to be a very, very popular program over the last couple of decades. The town has made good use of it. Here are a couple of projects, a couple of awarded projects for the Church Street Sideway Project and some work on Main Street, Wall Street. And then you've got an upcoming project for Martin Road. So this is probably the single most popular grant program that we administer on behalf of the state. And the state will fund pretty much full construction costs. The town is responsible for all the design and permitting costs. So it's really, really beneficial for our towns. And it's very few states in the country offer something as beneficial as this for municipalities. Next slide, please. So the next department I wanted to highlight is Regional Planning and Development. And in this role, we support our town planners and our economic development professionals. So we've got the Regional Planning Commission that I talked about before. We have a forum for folks to come together, talk about land use issues, et cetera. We promote transit-oriented development in areas where that's appropriate. You know, that's where you're looking for development adjacent to transit, whether it's bus or train. We have a brown, I'm not going to touch base on each and every one of these, but we have a brown field remediation program for contaminated properties. We do natural hazards mitigation planning. Flooding has increasingly become an issue in our region and for the state over the last decade. So we're doing some work in that area. We work to produce model regulations so that our towns can utilize. A couple of initiatives that I would mention. I'll just mention two that we're just starting. One is a regional housing strategy. So we want to develop a set of tools that our towns can use to increase the housing supply at local option. At local option. So we're not looking for a one-size-fits-all model here, but a variety of solutions that our towns can utilize. For example, model regulations, if you're looking to promote maybe more multifamily housing that might work for your community, you know, and we want to be able to work in the context of the community. You know, large-scale projects may not work in a semi-rural community like yours. But maybe two families, three families, four families might, you know, in certain locations around town. We're also going to be looking at creating a regional land bank or land trust where we can rehabilitate, where we can rehabilitate homes and put them into productive use. So this regional housing strategy, this is going to take a couple of years to prepare. And for each of our projects, we tend to have an advisory committee comprised of town staff and other representatives from our communities to help oversee the project and to provide us with input. And the other one I would mention here is stormwater management. I don't know to what extent it's an issue here in Hebron. I would imagine you're experiencing at least some of it on your roadways and all. But in some of our communities, especially those in Hartford and the Ring towns, it's a real significant issue. So we're going to be looking at the possibility of creating a regional stormwater utility that can help build and manage stormwater infrastructure in our region. So those are two examples of our work in that arena. Moving on, and this is the third of the fourth of our departments that I'll highlight tonight. Municipal Services, one of our longest-standing services is our Purchasing Coalition, our Purchasing Council. And we serve in this role almost 140 of the state's 169 municipalities. So what we do is we go out to bid for real basic stuff like grass seed and fuel oil and more complex things like firehouse and budgeting software. And we negotiate the best price for our members. So you can buy the product or the service off of our list. We've been doing this for a good long time. We're in the construction space now. This easy IQC program that works really well for smaller municipal construction jobs, but we've completed a few larger ones recently. A $30 million public works facility for the city of New Britain. And I think it's $7 million facility for the town of Canton. We also engage in legislative advocacy. Each and every year, we put together a legislative program of initiatives that are very, very important to our municipalities. Couple of initiatives we have, the Regional Performance Incentive Program, really looking to promote this. This is a state grant. This is a state grant that helps subsidize over a three-year period the creation of a new regional service or program. And it's primarily designed for service sharing. And all it takes is two organizations. So if you want to share services with your own school district or your regional school district or with an adjacent town, you can apply for funding under this program. And the CAG, we're the official applicant on behalf of our members. And the state will subsidize it over a three-year period. So one example I would highlight is the towns of Fulton and Marlboro just applied for a grant and they're receiving a grant to create a trainee program for their building department. So building code officials are really hard to find. We're realizing we've got to, we've got to train people why they train, why they learn. So those two towns are coming together utilizing this state grant to hire a one or more trainees. And the state will subsidize their costs over a three-year period. In year four, you have to assume the full cost of it. But it's worked out really well. The program's been around for about 15 years now. And then as Tiffany can attest to, is that Tealy? Pronouncing your last name correctly. We're working hard to promote federal funding opportunities under the bipartisan infrastructure law and related legislation. We've created a dedicated position. And we've helped our towns bring in over $60 million in competitive grants thus far, primarily for roadway improvements. That's been the number one grant program in our region for this initiative. And then let me move on to our last department. And I can pause here. Public Safety and Homeland Security. We staffed the Capital Region Emergency Planning Council. It was very, very active over the course of the pandemic, more recently active in responding to the Hawthorne Fire in Berlin, which impacted a number of towns. And this is a group of emergency management folks and public safety people across the region. And we work very closely with the State Department of Emergency Management and Homeland Security. We also staff the Capital Region Chiefs of Police Association. We do a lot of training here. We do a lot of training for these citizen corps. So if you have a local SERF team and emergency, a citizen emergency response team, we help train them and we utilize grant funding and we have trainers on staff. It's a very, very popular program. We also administer other federal and state grants for public health departments. I think we're supporting 20 health departments around the region with this. We help our police departments purchase equipment like SWAT vehicles, et cetera. So the only slides I have remaining are highlights from the last fiscal year. In the interest of time, I'm happy to stop here and take any questions or thoughts that you might have.
Sure. A couple of questions. You were talking about the Economic Development District. That is not going to affect the town from also applying for grants or what have you, correct?
No, it's here to help supplement your efforts.
Okay. And then on the regional housing, years ago, this is going back, I'm going to say at least 25 years ago, there was some, unless it was federal programs where there was monies available for senior citizens, low-income people to get their houses, in some cases actually livable.
Yes.
Is that any kind of a plan that's planning on coming back?
Yeah, that will be part of what we look at, you know, and I know there's federal funding through the Small Cities Community Development Block Grant. It is competitive. It can be utilized for that, for that purpose, Mr. Larson. But we're going to be looking at housing across a broader spectrum. So not just affordable housing, but typically almost the entire range with the exception of the upper end. Because inventory is at such a premium here and it's limited. You know, we're not able to meet the demand. So supportive housing for seniors, for persons with disabilities, for veterans, that will all be part of the mix, too.
Okay, because this was expressly for housing repairs so that people could stay in their housing. And right now, there is, from what I've been able to find, no funds out there. And I actually know of few homes that quite literally could be condemned that seniors are living in, but there's no money for them to be able to fix anything.
Okay, I believe there may be some existing programs. I'll look into that if you pass that information on to Ms. Lanson and Mr. Tierney. Thank you. Sure.
I think just a general comment, if I can. Just because you and I were just at an infrastructure event a few weeks ago. I think a general comment and something that we hear often, which is why at this event we were at, we had a rural infrastructure panel. I think there's this misnomer out there that the funding opportunities to the BIL in Asia, a lot of it seems highly focused on cities, right, or larger municipalities. I'm wondering if you can speak to the opportunities that exist for small town like ours to benefit from those very large federal programs and how you can help us do that.
Oh, that's a great point. Thank you for raising it. So there are a number of programs under the BIL that are specific for rural communities. Primarily in the area of road and safety improvements, but not exclusively. Also for water and wastewater, including community systems. So what we do is we are constantly screening. We prepare a monthly grant newsletter that we distribute. And we're there to help our towns prepare competitive applications. So we encourage our towns to reach out to us. If, even if they have the idea, if you have an idea for a project, come to us and we will look at all the opportunities under fate, federal and state, to try to identify an applicable grant. We're also looking at culverts. We know culverts are a significant issue for our more rural communities. And we're going to be looking at the opportunity to package that together and apply for federal funding, probably under the Safe Streets for All program for that purpose. So the two most popular programs to date have been Safe Streets for All, SS4A, which you may have heard of, and Raze, which I think stands for rebuilding America's infrastructure sustainably and equitably. So yes, we're really looking to promote that program. We're a very diverse region. Very diverse region, right? We've got a handful of urban centers like Hartford and East Hartford and New Britain. The vast majority of our towns I would characterize as suburban. And then we've got rural communities as well and semi-rural communities. And all 38 towns are very important to us. And we want to make sure that everybody is getting something out of your membership. And we're here to help you do your job.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I did have a follow-up question. And thank you for coming today. With respect to the grants and the grant writing, there's probably some municipalities or cities that do it well. They get a lot of funds.
Right.
Do they employ somebody part-time or full-time in their departments to write these grants? Or do they maybe hire a consultant or something to help?
It's a combination of all of those. I would say only a handful of communities have. When you're talking about full-time staff, full-time staff, oftentimes it's a component of someone's job. They also do grant writing as part of it. There are some contractual services. They tend to specialize in various areas like community development, for example, or economic development. That's a, that's a model. Some communities have part-time people. But, you know, you could look to share a person with your school district or your regional school district or even adjacent municipalities. You know, and if you're successful, that position will pay for itself. You could even use that ARPIP program I talked about, that Regional Performance Incentive Program, to consider sharing a position with another entity. It only takes two. That's all the state requires. Good question. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
All right. Thanks for having me.
We appreciate your time.
Yes, and I really appreciate your, thank you, appreciate your membership in our region.
Thank you very much.
Okay.
Thank you.
Good to see you.
I will.
Right, Donna. Section six, we are now on section six of our agenda, which is the Town Manager Report. So on behalf of the Town Manager's Office, I turn it over to Donna.
I will briefly report a few things. This Saturday, December 7th, is the Hebron Holiday Celebration at the library in front of the old town hall. That's going to be from 3:00 to 5:00 with the tree lighting at 5:00. And we'll be visiting perhaps in the library, carolsing, a little bit of everything. And as part of that, we're going to be doing the ribbon-cutting ceremony for the new bridge at Pendleton Drive. And that will be at 3:30. Other than that, our office is busy. We're working on our pub. We've spent a lot of time over the last many months and it's crunch time. So we're focusing our efforts on our pub. We are working on CIP, the Budget Document Requests are going out soon, within the week. And the RFQ for the DPW Design Professionals is being issued more. That's it.
Okay, that's a lot. So with that, it's a nice transition into section seven, which is all business and the
And the first item is seven A, which is, um, the American Rescue Plan State and Local, uh, Recovery Funds Update. So I'll turn it back over to Donna, cuz I know a lot of good work's being done there. And this is sort of a big part of our meeting tonight, so back to Donna.
So we handed out tonight an update from what was in your agenda package. Um, if you want me to run through it, I can, and I do have, um. Matt Bordeaux and I think Frank Bryant is, yeah, they're both here virtually, so they can jump in if there are any questions.
Hey, yeah, why don't we do that? Why don't you just focus on the highlights and obviously we'll bring up particular items where those gentlemen can jump in as needed.
So, and we spent a lot of time working with Lori, our finance director, to try to make sure that all of these numbers are accurate. Because a lot of them are, you know, moving where. Activity is going on and a lot of these accounts every single day. So what we're, um, presenting tonight and recommending, and we think we are very close to. Finishing at least the selectments appropriations. Um, and then hopefully be able to award two bids, um, tonight. So for projects that we're recommending that we close out and return the funds to our B O. The first one is Pendleton Drive to the Library, uh, Library Pedestrian Bridge. There's about sixty thousand dollars remaining in that account under in ARPA. We're recommending that we take thirty-five thousand back. And there are bills that we're expecting from the engineer, from the contractor. And then there are also some. Electrical issues that have come up.
Yes.
Um, that we are working. That's a little bit of a moving target.
So good question, if I may, do you anticipate that the entirety of the twenty-four thousand nine hundred sixty-seven will be spent? At this point?
We do believe so. And Matt is here, um. If you have any specific questions about that. Um. Matt, do you have anything to add?
I don't think so, I think you covered it well, um. We're expecting a few bills from our electrical consultant, uh, and the town engineer, uh, his firm. Um, couple of outstanding. Electrical. Issues, um, and then final invoices from the awarded contractor, so. Uh, we're pretty confident that that remainder will be, uh. Necessary and used.
Thank you.
So question then, is that thirty-five thousand not available then? Is that incorporated into this balance?
We're recommending that we take thirty-five back and that we leave the twenty-four.
Okay, okay.
So what happens if? Twenty-five, twenty-four thousand nine hundred sixty-seven dollars turns into twenty-two thousand three hundred and thirty-seven dollars in February?
So we.
We still have interest.
We have interest.
No, 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 I went the other way. I, I went, I meant, we, we, we budgeted for twenty-five thousand, which is left, and only spent twenty-two. Now we have three thousand dollars.
Yeah.
That's coming back.
Right now, we're working within the interest.
This is all within the interest at this one, so we don't, we don't have to worry about something coming back to us. Okay, that's what I'm, that's what I'm gonna make sure everyone's comfortable with.
Yeah, technically in January could have a hundred thousand and not be in violation.
Relative, cuz of the. So I'm just making sure this is all covered in interest, I'm just. Level setting here, okay.
Thank you.
Because even, even some of these that are like. Way out, you know, like, like the skate park. Construction is not gonna be done until, you know, next fall. Yeah. Uh, so we may receive back ten grand. Maybe, maybe not, but, uh, you know, if we receive back ten grand next fall. As, as long as, as long as we're getting to the end line next December, less than a hundred thousand. We can still just kind of pocket that money, we don't have to return it.
Yeah, I just wanna make sure, cuz for those that might be jumping in and may not be students of ARPA, wondering, I guess, thought, you know, it's good to sort of. Refresh.
Yeah, cuz, cuz.
The approach.
Yeah, some of these projects, we won't have like final, final numbers until.
No, correct.
Maybe.
But to the key is that we're working within the interest level. The interest that we have, so we have that ultimate flexibility, which is what we're trying to get at. And so we don't have to end up with. Anyway, we have, it, it gives us the flexibility that we.
But, but to your point, I do wanna get as close as possible because.
Well, that's why we're in.
One of these, right, yeah, if one of these next November ends up giving us back fifty grand. Well, then we're kind of like.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's, that's a little more than I was expecting.
Well, in the interest, at least we have the flexibility of not, I, to your point originally and over the months, we don't, we're not gonna have to return anything is really what I'm getting.
Right.
Is what this is all kind of. Just thought we'd sort of slow that down a little bit.
Okay.
So the next project is the Burnt Hill Park Baseball Fields, that one came in way over bid. We are going to look to do that.
Um, I'm sorry Donna, I tried to go back and look for it, but I know you probably have it there.
So we.
Time, what was the bid at, was ninety?
It was, it was eighty-nine, just under ninety thousand.
Yes, okay.
Yes.
I just wanted to have it for.
So this amount that we're recommending the take back into the ARPA fund is the, the final amount. We've had a few, um, engineering bills that we had to charge to that account. And then the last one is the Green Committee. That is money that has been sitting there, we have. Worked with them to try to. Get it spent and they just.
Don't.
They don't, so they did the bike racks, I think the bike racks were the last expense. They did, we did a little bit of signage, like five hundred dollars worth of signage, but this is money that we can take back. So with, um, those three projects.
Just say, have they ever used the NIPR funds yet? Or is that still out there also?
I think they're working on.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
And then we did add November's interest, so the money remaining. Is fifty-one thousand with the additional interest. So between those projects and, uh, ARPA balance, we have one hundred and forty-eight thousand three eighteen. That's money we have available if you agree to close out those projects.
Okay, so we need in this case a motion and then.
Not yet.
Not for that one, that one at a time?
Yeah, let's just go.
Go into them all?
Yeah, let's go through the whole thing and.
It's fine.
Um. So the bids that we opened last week were the Veterans Memorial. Our Skate Park. The bid came in, in at three hundred and eighty thousand. And we have some, uh, engineering bills that we are expecting. So with, uh, expenses that we've had so far. The bid where it is and, um. Craig is negotiating with the, um, contractor to see if we can get that down a little bit. Uh, maybe with some in-kind services of things that we can do that they, we won't have to pay them for. So, um, we need an additional fifty-three thousand dollars. And when we. The resolution or the, uh, motion to award that bid, we are gonna have it. Um, we recommend it be up to three hundred and eighty thousand. So that we're not locked in to. Three hundred and eighty.
On. That. I thought at one point. When we decided not to do the upgrades to the, uh, baseball field. It was discussed of putting that money into the skate park. Or, or down to Veterans Park.
Yeah, yeah, because. So all, all that's. Right, so all that turns gives us that and out of this we.
We'll take that.
Correct, yeah, 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 yeah.
Any questions on that, um, skate park? At this point? Okay, so the next one is the field lighting and those bids came in, um, less than what we had anticipated, more than what we budgeted. But, um, we were pleased with the bids, we received several bids. This, um, the low bidder. Has very good references and the product that they are, are offering is a very good product. So with the bid at, um, two ninety-seven, we have some remaining engineering that we anticipate to be around forty thousand dollars. The baseball organization is donating forty thousand dollars, so we'll need. Sixty-nine oh fifty-three. To be able to, um, enter into that contract.
Okay, then again, I would suggest that that be. In the motion and up to. Cuz there may be some. Other, there, there may be some other cost savings in the electrical. On that.
We can do that. Um, the next thing is we did receive, and you should have received a copy in your packet, a request from the Hebron Historical Society to move money. From the cemetery line into the Old Town Hall. Repairs and renovation line. So, um, they do have. Proposals for additional work at the Old Town Hall that they would like to do. And they are actually getting additional proposals because there is. The, the basement of that building is an old stone and dirt foundation. And they have to do some waterproofing and ventilation of that building, or it's just gonna keep causing issues. So they need to deal with that. So this money would go a long way to get a lot of the work done over there. And Andy is recommending that you.
Okay.
Approve that.
That's, so that's anticipated to have purchase orders.
Yes.
Or contract by December thirty.
Yes, okay, yeah. Um, Jeff Kirkham is, is ready to go, he just needs to go ahead.
That's what we like.
So with all of that, um, the balance remaining after we do award those bids and make those transfers. We have twenty-six thousand two hundred and sixty-five dollars. So we're recommending.
Here comes the best part, go ahead.
We're recommending that we take. Twenty-six thousand dollars and fund the Hebron Elementary School Playground Repair. That'll buy us a few more years to put that into the C I P for the replacement of that landscape. And that leaves you with two hundred and sixty-five dollars. That's what I mean, so.
That's right.
Um, I did find out about an hour before the meeting that we're gonna have a couple thousand dollars coming back from. The SERP vehicle.
Yeah.
Um, Paul Bingcroft has fully equipped it. Um, and he's got a couple thousand dollars to give back.
Has, this is great work.
Yeah.
Um, great work, but, well, not, no, there's no but. Has Lori, um, calculated, because the expenditures will take place over a period of time. The anticipated interest with that balance reducing, going forward in twenty-five?
We haven't calculated going forward interest, but there will be.
Well, no, I mean, I mean, this was spending this money, you know, over, over a year. I just was curious if she had any.
November's interest was about nine thousand. So.
Okay.
What other projects have been signed and are moving forward?
Um, pretty much every.
Everything above, everything above.
Everything above.
Yeah.
Has a contract. In place.
We're voting on these.
There are a few, I will point out that there are a few, um. The Dog Car. Peter's House and the Horton House. That we have. Contracts in place for. Parts of it, but not for all of that. So, for example, the Dog Car, we're, you know, currently talking about possibly putting it in a, at another location. Um, so there may be some. Working lot that may need to be put in at. The first location if it doesn't go. You know, so those are things that are still. In the mix. Um, Peter's House, I think. Um, we have a contract in place for the electrical, we have a contract in place. For the paving. And we are working on agreements for the craftsmen.
For the interior.
To do the interior work. And Matt is here and can explain that in a little more detail. And the same thing with the Horton House, we have a couple contracts in place for the work at the Horton House. And we have a couple others that we are. Waiting for the, um, proposals and contracts so we can enter into them. Some of these are, it's very difficult to get some of these contractors to provide. Who knows? It's like one.
But I'm just going to say before we transition to Matt, because I do wanna hear details about these projects. I mean, the current balances for the Peter's House and the Horton House are in the high sixties. So is the anticipation that all of that will be spent? Or are we thinking there will be funds coming from that back to us?
Peter's House, we're very confident that all of that will be spent, um, and still not be enough. To do the work that needs to be done. Um, the Horton House, I, I will let Matt speak to that. We are, like I said, waiting to get, he's waiting to get some. Landscaping proposals, there's some landscape work that needs to be done to help with some. Some drainage and water into the basement. He, I, I'll let Matt speak cuz he's more familiar with, with those specifics. Matt, can you jump in here?
Sure.
Thank you.
Um, so as it relates, you can, can you hear me?
Yeah.
Yep.
Uh, as it relates to the Horton House, um. So we're gonna be spending, um, approximately twenty to get the entire building, uh, painted exterior. And, um. We have a structural engineer that will be. Preparing a design. For, uh, one of the chimney stacks that is. Uh, in need of repair in the basement. Um. That will, um. Allow me in the future to, um. Put that project out to bid, this will not be an ARPA-funded project, but the design services will be. And then, uh, the landscaping that Donna mentioned. So I had, uh, Savian Sons who do, um, interior basement waterproofing come and take a look and they. You know, uh, they were, they were rather honest with me and said, you know, uh, before I make any recommendations that you, um. Waterproof the interior of your basement, you really should be looking at the exterior. And when you do a perimeter walk, uh, you see that a lot of the landscape is actually pitched towards the foundation. Uh, we have some plant material that's, uh, exceeded, you know, it's, um. Uh, it, it, this space available, uh, so I'm gonna have a landscaper remove the plant material. Um, grade the surface material away from the, from the, uh, the building. Into a swell, so the water is moving out and away from the building rather than toward, uh, what is a rock foundation, you know, uh. Uh, some, somewhat, uh, porous rock foundation. So, um, the three of those items, um. Uh, we expect will consume the rest of the remaining funding toward the Horton House. And then in terms of the Peter's House, um, there's a, a number of different projects that I have, um, quotes for. So we have the twenty-one nine for the paving. We have approximately four thousand for electrical services. Uh, we have, um. We have upwards of ten thousand in different, um, components of interior painting and finishing of various rooms. Of, uh, the replacement of basement windows with plexiglass because they keep getting shattered, um, by our lawnmowers. Of, uh, the, the rebuilding or reconstruction of interior doors. Of plaster work, um, in rooms that require it. Um, but most significantly, we have a kind, a carpenter. Who at a, at an hourly rate will, um. Be working to repair the porch and the upstairs ballroom. Uh, exterior wall girt, which is a structural member. Um, those are the two most consequential and most expensive components of the repair. Uh, work necessary moving forward, so what we're gonna have them do or him do is. Um, and, and again, let me back up one second to say that we are still waiting for, uh, final plans. For, uh, from our structural engineer to fully inform us how those things will be done. So the approach is to have the carpenter work at, at an hourly rate, which I've compared to other, you know, comparable contractors. Um, to basically. Um, to basically utilize the funds until they're exhausted. To improve the porch and improve the interior of the uh, the ballroom. So um, that's basically the approach.
So it's December fifth and we anticipate that we're gonna have all these contracts and everything signed by the thirty-first for the work move forward here.
Yeah, I actually have all the contracts prepared, I think uh, the electrical and the paving's already been signed. Um, I have in hands the um. What did I say, the basement windows and the painting, interior painting, I have contracts for those. And then the rest will be exhausted in the contract that I also have for uh, the hourly work for the structural uh, improvements.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Welcome.
Okay, so any other questions?
Just a comment, I, I really, you know, appreciate all of your hard work, you know, representing all the folks at the town and. Town departments because this has been quite a project and as you listen to all this, I hope that the public will appreciate. The amount of work that's gone in to doing things that's.
Yeah.
And, and sometimes I know they decided to do one or two big projects and, and that has its own challenges. But we decided to do a lot of projects that requir, required a lot of work and I, you see. And the ability for, for us as a community with the town taking the lead to manage uh, the budget. Uh, the way we've managed it to allow us to utilize all the funds, I think it's a testament to a lot of terrific work, so thank you. Uh, for all your great work and the work that everybody's doing on behalf of what will ultimately benefit the town.
I just wanted to add that I think virtually every aspect of our community somehow was positively. Uh, touched with ARPA funds, you know, the senior citizen generator, uh. You know, the schools, uh, the, the parks and rec, the other sports for both the kids and the adults. Um, health services, you know, the money got. I think very appropriately spread out amongst so many of the different entities within the town.
Mm-hmm.
And that in itself is an incredible undertaking.
Oh, no question, and, and obviously thanks to the board for supporting that approach, right? And also being, giving us how we're gonna move forward and so, uh, great work, so. And we're looking forward to as, as this first phase starts to wrap up to probably take some time, then, you know, maybe in January to sort of summarize. And summarize the good work that's been done, just to sort of memorialize uh, uh, where we are, cause it'll be a good stopping point and yes, you could. Okay, um, so I think at this juncture anyway, there's obviously motions coming up, go ahead.
Yeah, just a quick question, um, this recommendation to fund the Hebrew now place gate, do you need that in the form of a motion in this agenda item? Or is it coming up later, or is this just?
I think what could work is if we could have a motion to approve this entire recommendation. Cause that would allow us to close out those projects where we're taking money back.
Okay.
Provide the additional funding to the projects that we need additional funding, transfer the money for historic.
Yeah.
Historical society and that, so if we could, I think, and you don't have to read the whole thing, but a motion. To approve the recommendation as presented, okay?
Would have been revised.
But, okay, so we can look at that in, and as we transition to uh, new business to replace A and B with a combination today and B.
Yeah.
Business was designed for.
I just wanted to make sure we gave them what they needed.
Right, no, that's good, cause that's not in the motion, so.
Okay.
Um, as we, uh, we can hold off till we get to A, uh, to A and B and then look at consolidating that if everyone's comfortable with any appropriate family amendments. That might result. A lot of discussion there, so, okay, so let's uh, think about that if we move to the new business, but um, anything else for the old business, so.
So you can approve this now.
Oh, right.
Oh yeah, cause technically, technically these are for the bids.
Right, although just. Oh, I see, you don't. Okay, so you don't wanna bring all that in the same bucket, okay.
Separate, yeah.
Yeah, okay.
I'll move that the board of selectmen approve the town manager's recommendation for the reallocation. From project closings, ARPA funds is presented.
As revised. For the paper.
But the bids, the bids will allow for that.
No, these, just because this is revised item doesn't mean we revised it here and now in the discussion.
No, I'm saying for this, for this sheet. Oh, the revise, revise seven, that's for.
For revised items, seven A.
Yeah, that's what you thought, yes, oh, I'm sorry, okay, all right, all right, so motions read, thank you Tiffany, any additional of this, or any discussion? Okay, um, no discussion, further discussion, excuse me, move to uh, motion, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye, those opposed nay. But please note if you wish to abstain, so ours.
Uh, Dale Larson, aye, thank you. Keith Bennett, aye.
Tiffany Teely, aye.
Thank you.
Claudia.
Claudia Riley, aye.
Peter Casper, Peter Casper, aye, motion passes unanimously, thank you, Don.
Thank you.
Okay. Seven D, Don. Yes, you ready?
I'm ready.
Okay, um, the permanent public works action to be update, um, I, I will look at and just simply remind, or let the board know that the items that Mr. Steiner. All the work that he presented to us is all, is, is underway, there's a lot of significant work that's being um, uh, that, in progress that's being made. But I, I don't have any additional updates until we have some more definitive closure on those outstanding items. And then we'll bring Richard back to provide a, a substantive update to the board, but these are moving along uh, pretty well, so. I don't have anything else unless anyone on the board has a question. Okay, thank you. All right, that moves us to seven C, which is to adopt the ordinance of the Board of Assessment Appeals Alternates. Okay, so um. We have the um, item and then there was one revision, if I remember, to not to exceed. So I can, we can, we can add that to the wording of the um. On seven C, correct Donna, where we said not to exceed.
And shall be appointed up to a four-year term.
Yes. Up to, yep. Okay, all right. So does anyone wish to read the resolution?
Dan, okay.
Thank you, just add that.
Okay, uh, the proposed resolution be resolved by the Hebrew Board of Selectmen. That in accordance with section four zero four of the Hebrew Town Charter, the following ordinance be adopted. Ordinance establishing the appointment of alternate members to the Board of Assessment Appeals. Membership generally, one, the Board of Assessment Appeals is uh, constituted in accordance with section three. Or two zero three of the Hebrew Town Charter and consists of three members each elected to four-year terms. Two, appointment of alternate members, the Board of Selectmen may appoint. Uh, three alternate members to the Board of Assessment Appeals in accordance with Connecticut General Statutes. Nine dash one nine nine B, each alternate member shall be an elector of the municipality. And shall be appointed up to a four-year term. When seated, an alternate member shall have all the powers and duties of a member of the Board of Assessment Appeals.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Lars, the motions are read, any additional discussion on this since we had covered it earlier? Nope, okay. To vote, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye, those opposed nay, or please note if you wish to abstain, Dan.
Uh, Dale Larson, aye.
Keith.
Keith Bennett, aye.
Thank you Tiffany.
Tiffany Keely, aye.
Thank you Claudia.
Claudia Riley, aye.
Thank you Peter Casper, aye, the resolution passed unanimously, thank you very much. Okay. Moves us to seven D, which is any other old business, Donna, on behalf of the town, any other old business you would spend for the board, anyone on the board? Okay, that moves us to eight, which is new business.
So that is the award of the skate park.
Yep.
And we presented a motion to the skate park, we did receive only one. Did, and that was um, it was an R F E, so there is room for negotiating here. And Craig is um, in negotiations with the contractor. So we're recommending award to Rampage in an amount not to exceed three hundred and eighty thousand.
Okay, uh, so read the motion and open up for discussion, Keith, can you take this?
I move that the Hebrew Board of Selectmen award the bid for the Veterans Memorial Park Skate Park to Rampage of Stratford, Connecticut. In an amount not to exceed three hundred and eighty thousand dollars. And to authorize Andrew J Tierney, town manager, to sign any necessary contract documents.
Thank you for reading the motion, in terms of discussion, uh, Craig, um, could you just provide a little additional context relative to? The negotiation and what that means and how much you're, you're focusing on, just, or at least any additional context on the concept of additional negotiations relative to that amount?
Yeah, we um, actually spoke to uh, to him a little bit today about um, some in-kind services that we can provide. Um, something like offering uh, either portable toilets, dump runs. Um, taking down the fence at the skate park, a couple of the random things that um, he had in. Not, not necessarily written in the bid, but accounted for, so I, I don't think it's gonna be, you know, a twenty or thirty thousand dollars. It might be, you know, five thousand dollars or something like that, but at least it does give us, you know, um. A little bit of negotiation power.
Oh, that's great, no, I just, I did, that's exactly what I was looking for anyway, just a little bit more detail on that, other discussion and questions for, but. I just thought it would have been cooler, like handing out jackhammers to the teenager. Well, there, there.
That's only a massive liability, so Keith.
There, there is the opportunity um, to have some volunteer work from uh, especially from like the Ram um, Skate Club. It could be something as, as easy as tying in rebar that um, doesn't involve any power equipment. Um, but that's, you know, those are some discussions to have. Um, another thing too, is they're actually, they're, they're kind of jonesing to get started. So he said this winter, they can start fabricating and framing up, so um, this could be a, a quicker project. I mean, obviously depends on the weather, um, with pouring concrete, but some of the smaller things might be completed earlier than the spring.
Nice, great, and keep the cost down too.
Yeah.
Yeah, over time, right?
Great.
Great, any other uh, discussion? Okay, motions have been read, uh, and we've ended discussion, so we'll move to vote, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye, those opposed. Now, please note if you wish to abstain, Dan.
Uh, Dale Larson, aye. Keith Bennett, aye.
Tiffany Teely, aye. Claudia Riley, aye.
Thank you Peter Casper, aye, the motion passes unanimously, thank you very much, thank you Craig.
Thank you, Chris.
Very much. Okay, that moves us, Donna, to eight B.
All right, so the next one is the award for the Veterans Memorial Park Field Lighting. We received four bids, they were all over the place, but the um, low bidder is a. Reasonable amount compared to what we had anticipated, they come with very good references. Um, so we are looking to award this bid to Earthlight. Solar and Energy Solutions out of Ellington, Connecticut. So this was a, a bid, so I'm, you know, we can change the language to not to exceed.
Yep.
But it is a specific amount that they bid, so I don't know how much.
Okay.
Negotiation room there is there.
Okay, but that was their bid, so I will take a crack at it and open up for any family amendments. That's, if everyone's comfortable with that. So I'll move that the Hebrew Board of Selectmen award the bid for the Veterans Memorial Park Field Lighting to Earthlight Solar and Energy Solutions of Ellington, Connecticut. In the amount not to exceed two hundred and ninety-eight thousand dollars and authorize Andrew Dick Tierney, town manager, to sign any necessary contract documents.
It's actually two ninety-seven, nine oh three.
I know, and I, my motion's two hundred and ninety-eight thousand dollars. Because he said, she said there was room for negotiation and that was a bid, um, so I just rounded up. Um, but again, okay, well, I read the motion, so let's open up for discussion.
Yeah, I'm good with not to exceed that amount.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, but.
I just know that there is, you know, the engineering, there is some, some electrical things that came to light that may cause some potential savings of four thousand dollars.
Okay. But are you comfortable that not to exceed allows us to, we're not gonna spend more than that, I'm rounding up with that, that amount. Uh, because that's a specific bid that's open up for some potential negotiation or savings.
Yeah.
Would you rather have a lower number?
I would go with the amount, uh, and as I say, I would be interested in knowing. You know, the talent engineer and the electoral engineer, if they can uh, review the newer, newer information. And see if that can, you know, create cost savings. I just don't want them to say, oh yeah, well, here I got it, so we're just gonna walk with that number.
Has this newer information been communicated to them?
I went with um, Tom.
Tom Fenton.
Benton, the other night, as he was saying about how there's not four-inch conduit out to the pole. There is four-inch conduit out to the pole, so that may negate the setting of another power company pole out on the property. So I'm just hoping that that gets looked at, you know, before it gets finalized.
How would that impact the price?
Well, a telephone pole is probably up to two or three thousand dollars. It's that.
That was a few years ago.
So you're saying.
That's low. I'm saying a telephone pole nowadays is a five grand all, all put together.
Okay. You know, so if there's an existing conduit that can be utilized.
That would then not require the additional pole, yeah.
And was that before or after the twenty-seventh, before?
It was just literally after the bid. Oh yeah, it was uh, when um, Tuesday night or, yeah, Tuesday night.
Okay.
Okay.
So I'm not understanding, do you, are you concerned that there's going to be too much savings? Or are you concerned what their bidding is not going to be enough?
I'm saying what they're bidding may be too much, they, there should be potentially a reduction.
So we should see some ARPA money come back to us, or we might see a slightly smaller bill go out to the baseball organization.
Okay.
Because this is.
Okay, so that's good news.
Yeah.
Yes, I just wanna make sure that it gets looked at.
Well, absolutely.
Don't say, well, it's already awarded, so we're not gonna look for any cost savings.
Well, they don't need to do that, and they would have, right, they would have. No?
They're gonna look at the numbers, say, we got the job, this is what we got it for, and that's what we.
But who overs, who overlooks that, is that right?
I don't know.
Greg, are you part of that?
Um, yeah, I mean, I can have a discussion with Tom tomorrow about that and see what he thinks and um, I think we could still.
Two hundred and ninety-seven thousand, nine hundred and three thousand nine cents, and they go, they don't have to do this poll and it really should be two hundred and ninety thousand dollars. And nobody says anything, I mean, I, I don't understand how that would come about.
Yeah, cause tho- those, those specs are in, in the bid package, so if that doesn't belong in there at that point, we shouldn't be getting charged for that. So I know what Dan's saying, they're gonna hopefully see that as an oversight on our, on our end that we don't notice. But uh, when, we'll have, we'll have.
But they don't do the work, someone's all, someone's looking at the work done, right, I mean, it's not, they're not.
Yeah, the engineers will, will still be helping us um, monitor um, the project, so. I'd, I'd imagine we would catch that at some point, but we, I could still have a conversation with Tom. Um, you know, tomorrow or meet out there next week and figure out exactly um, what that looks like.
Okay, that's great, so thank you for that, thank you Dan.
Yep.
All right, so i- is the board looking for me to adjust this number downward? Or did we the exact number, I just think it's that oh nine uh, cents thing standardized, it sounds like I made.
I understand, I just.
It's just simpler for me to say that, Andy, you got up to two hundred and ninety-eight thousand, I'm looking to have it be nine oh three and ten cents, and then I'll come, you know, I got a penny over. But I'm happy to, with a friendly amendment, if you wanna go with the original number, I'm fine with that, you seem to be more comfortable with that, Dan.
I think, uh, uh, just my two cents, I think with the dual funding coming from, you know, the, the baseball organization. And from ARPA, you know, I would, I would much rather see ARPA funds get used for projects like this. And local nonprofits keep some of their funds from their own organization, their own initiatives. So I don't have a problem with us hacking on an extra hundred bucks to make it nice and even. And then maybe saving them that, or saving them any, any savings we may incur.
Yeah, I wanna spend almost time over eighty, eighty-six. I just, we just.
I'll go, I'll go with it, I'll go with it. I'll go, I'll go with it. I'll go with that.
Okay.
Yeah, I.
But, but I agree with Dan. I don't want to be paying.
Oh, no. That's when I started to get nervous. I'm like, they're just going to pocket four, five, or five thousand dollars. It's not, I have no interest in that.
Yeah.
I think that everyone charges municipalities too much money in general. That's just an opinion of an individual. But, um, nonetheless, um, okay, so motion's been read.
Can I just make one quick comment? I'm so sorry.
No, no.
It's actually something really nice. I just want to commend Craig for all of his hard work. Um, I think he's done an exceptional job with the amount of projects we've thrown his way. When you think about it, ranging from finding a place for a dog park to getting lighting to building a skate park. I think he's done a great job. And it's just been a multitude of projects in this arena that's really going to make a difference for people's recreational needs from young to old, when you think about pickleball courts and everything else. So I just wanted to take a moment to publicly thank Craig for his hard work. That's it.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Thank you. Very nice. Thank you for doing that. Okay. Motion read, discussion. Thank you very much Tiffany. And obviously thank you Craig. Uh, so move to a vote. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Those opposed, nay. But please note if you wish to abstain. Dan.
Uh, Dale Larson, aye. You've been at aye.
Tiffany Tealy, aye.
Claudia Riley, aye.
Peter Casper, aye. The motion passed unanimously. Thank you and thank you for the discussion and thank you for finding some money, Mr. Larson. All right. And so patiently, I know we have a, a guest on the line, so Donna, eight C.
By the department grant, and we have Chief Storkell here who can give a brief overview of the grant that we're looking for the selectmen to.
Thank you. Well, chief, thanks for joining. You're, you're a regular, so maybe we ought to give you a seat, but, um.
You, you probably should. So good evening, everybody. We're, we're looking to apply for a grant through Connecticut Water for the purchase of two slow-closing hydrant gates. Uh, we've previously applied for this grant. Uh, we were successful two years ago. Uh, we purchased two of the same items then. Um, last year we, we weren't successful because they wanted to share the, share the wealth with some other departments, but we're applying for the exact same two pieces of equipment that we, uh, previously did. Um, and the cost of those is right around eighteen hundred dollars and, and Connecticut Water will actually give us up to two thousand. So the, the cost of these would be fully covered, uh, with the grant if we were successful.
Great. Shall I ask Claudia if you could read the motion, please, and then we'll open up for any discussion and, and questions for the chief?
Sure. Move that the Hebrew Board of Selectmen approve the application to the Connecticut Water Firefighter Support Grant Program in the amount of two thousand dollars for fire hydrant gate valves and authorize Andrew J Tierney, town manager, to apply or accept and receive the grant.
Motion's been read. Any additional discussion? Any questions about gate valves?
I think I trust our, our fire chief to know what those are and how to use them.
So chief, if I may, so the, um, if, if we don't get the grant, how, is this a, is this a nice to have or a need to have that we have to think about addressing differently?
So, so these are items that we should have on each one of our fire engines. Uh, these are directly used with, uh, fire hydrants, which we have all through the center of town. Uh, so these enable us to tap into the fire, the fire hydrant has three ports where we can receive water or take water from. Um, these allow us to get the, the most volume out of those hydrants as we can. Um, and, and again, we've already equipped two of our trucks and we just want to finish the project in, in, and and supply the other two pieces of apparatus with the same type of hydrant gate. Uh, just to standardize everything. So if we were not successful with that, then just, you know, moving forward, we'd probably purchase one, uh, each year over the next two years out of our general operating budget.
Okay, thank you. Other discussion or questions for the chief? Okay, Claudia, thank you for reading the motion. Uh, we've finished discussion. Uh, we'll go to a vote. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Those opposed, nay. Or please note if you wish to abstain. Yeah.
Uh, Dale Larson, aye. He's been at aye.
Tiffany Tealy, aye. Claudia Riley, aye.
Claudia, Peter Casper, aye. The motion passed unanimously. And thank you for all your efforts, chief, and, and obviously for your patience in joining us, uh.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Guys, have a good night.
Okay, good night, Donna. Eight D.
So I don't think we need the meeting. What we'll do is we're constantly monitoring all of these ARPA projects. If we think there's going to be an issue with anything, we keep in touch with you. We have one more meeting in December that we can take care of any last minute things.
Yeah, I think as far as like the, the little things coming back, like the two thousand dollars you mentioned possibly from the, the certain vehicle. Um, I would like to see some of that, you know, let's, let's spend it down to the dollar. I mean, we have that. Laundry list of small Amazon items that we can really.
Yeah, so. For the night and revisit it then.
Yep, okay.
Okay, so, uh, with that, we will remove the proposed motion, which represents eight D, and we will not act on that. And we did act on that. We're not going to make a motion, so thank you for that. Uh, eight E is our draft agenda for our nineteenth meeting. So as always, any changes, additions, whatever you, you questions. Please continue to direct those to the town manager's office. So obviously me, we represent you in, in that regard. Uh, and so thank you for that. And Donna, any other old business to, any other, excuse me, new business to bring me for the board? Support of anything they wish to. Well, okay. That moves us to our consent agenda. Okay, we do not. Just the approval of the minutes, um, so does anyone, uh, I guess want to read that and then we'll, it's an immediate half. Well, first of all, does anybody have any issues with the agenda? I mean, sorry, with the. Okay. All right, well, I, well, so the consent agenda items are considered to be routine in nature, which the board may not need to discuss individually, maybe voting as a group. Any board member who wishes to discuss a particular item in this section may request the chair to remove it for later discussion in separate vote if necessary. We've addressed that. So we just have the approval of the minutes, which is ten dot eight dot one, November twenty-one, two thousand and twenty-four, regular meeting. So I've heard nothing to suggest that we're not, uh, that we discuss that further. So we'll move to a vote of that approval. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Those opposed, nay. If you wish to abstain, please note that as well.
Uh, Dale Larson, aye.
Thank you.
Keith Bennett, aye.
Tiffany Keely, aye. Claudia Riley, aye.
Peter Casper, aye. That's unanimously. Thank you. That moves us to ten agenda with liaison report. Um, I have nothing, and, and I'm on this every, and I, there's like one meeting that I attended and I'm not invited to anything else that I'm aware of. So there's just nothing, it's not like I'm not going.
Would be more mobile friendly and, and kind of able to be adjusted in the future. So.
Yeah, very cool.
Yeah, really cool. Sorry, you know, that was a long.
Well, it's a great update because a lot of people really just don't know. They hear open space, they, they hear expenditure. And the awareness is something we can continue to improve upon in the history, um, is, is.
Yeah, for, for some of those, uh, parcels, um, the amount of detail that, I, I mean, some of them, they're still working on it.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, but for some of them, the amount of detail, I mean, you, you scroll quite a ways down. There's a lot of detail there.
Well, like behind my house as an example is all the land that we now own and we get open space, but it was owned, uh, by the Hoegland Trust. So there's probably some interesting history behind that two hundred plus acres that the town has.
Right.
Um, and so I think it's great work. Then anything they can do to sort of describe how it came about or some of the history makes it even more meaningful. So, oh, that's great. I appreciate that update very much.
Thank you.
Good information. Uh, Rand Board of Ed, Claudia, anything that you wish to share?
They're meeting until next week, so I haven't.
All right, so that moves, thank you. That moves us to section eleven, our agenda, which is public comment. So I will just reference if anyone, uh, just as a reminder of the statement I read at the beginning of the meeting. Donna, is there any, uh, one online that has public? You want to take another run, Anna?
No, no, but thank you for so quickly getting that link and then testing it because I didn't know if I typed it in there properly.
You did indeed.
Okay, all right. So there's no public comment for those online. There's, there's no one here, uh, in attendance, uh, beyond the, the board and Donna. So uh, that, uh, moves us to section twelve on our agenda.
Move to adjourn the Hebrew Board of Selectmen's meeting at eight twenty-two P M.
Thank you so much, meeting adjourned.